Gentlemen, are you guys ready?
Yes.
Good evening. I would like to call tonight's East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. East Hemphill Township public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes or follow the chat procedure online. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on a non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item. And in a moment, I'm going to ask you to join me by rising for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. But before we do, I would like to draw your attention to a tragedy that occurred Sunday afternoon in East Hemphill Township, where one of our families lost their young son in a tragic accident. There is a prayer service being held tonight at 7:00 PM and also tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Hemphill Church of the Brethren. And I would just ask that you keep the Roberts family in your prayers and thoughts during the moment of silence. So would you please rise for the moment of silence? Thank you. And now the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For our first agenda item tonight, we have a special event. It doesn't happen often, but tonight we have, PSATs will be presenting to Thomas Russell a scholarship award in the local government achievement scholarship category. Could you please? Dave, do you have a few words?
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, Board. My name is Dave Sanco. I'm the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. We're a member service organization that supports all of the townships across Pennsylvania and tries to help them deliver the kind of quality government that you all expect and deserve. We've started a couple of years ago, a scholarship program with a recognition and an eye towards the future and what future generations will look like. And there will come a time when these folks aren't going to be up here and we're going to be needing some of the younger folks in the audience to transition. So we like to have that opportunity to, so we sponsored the board approved a scholarship program. It's open to juniors and seniors. There are both academic scholarships as well as community service scholarships, two of each, each year. And it's a little different in that it can be for college, it can be for two or four years, but it could also be for trade school or any career that leads towards certification. And the point is to try and help connect kids, students, with their townships, understanding that being involved in your township government, being involved in that community is one of the real strengths that Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania has and Pennsylvania local governments have. This year, Thomas got, you know, got involved with a community project. It would have been really easy when you go wander through your community and you see something that needs fixed. There are places where somebody will say, oh, let the government take care of that. But, you know, he said, no, I want to do this. I can do this. We can, and he got some friends together and they pulled together a project and rebuilt a bridge in a footbridge in a community park that will stand for, you know, another generations. And it was a great effort. It didn't require any tax dollars, but there was a partnership between the local governments and the scouts and his friends. And it's something that is really a little bit of the fabric that makes Pennsylvania a great place to live, work, and raise families. So I want to ask Thomas to come up. He's won the, one of our local government achievements scholarships for $1,500 that he can put towards both, well, to school as he makes that determination. He's a junior now and you're heading towards a career. What are you going to do? Chemical engineering? Well, great. Well, congratulations. And we'll do a couple of photos here.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Tom.
Are we ready to move on? Up next, we have our consent agenda. These are routine items that typically require very little debate or discussion. As the board looked over the consent agenda, are there any questions or concerns with the consent agenda?
No.
No, I will be abstaining from the consent agenda.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve consent agenda, all items A through E?
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Bennett is there, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have action items. We have Knoll Doorwork Park accepting the Lowbar bid of $799,573.47. This is the, this total price does not include some of the site amenities, such as the playground, equipment, benches, picnic tables, and some landscaping, which will be completed under the Co-Stars program. Any questions or anything else that we need to add to that?
We do have a picture of it that we'd like to show you. It's a rendering that was done by Lancaster, the Simon Foundation, Lancaster Conestoga Creek Foundation. They are collaborating with us to get this accomplished. They are contributing quite a bit of funds towards it. It's going to be, it has educational features in it. It's a parking lot. It's a playground. We have a pavilion. It's going to be the main trailhead to the Blue Green Corridor project, which is going through Lassaland or Lakswama Land. We have a educational trail that goes around the back. We have bird watching stations at the, there, which is going to look out across the meadow that's already existing. As you can see, it's very green. There's going to be lots of plantings, very all natural, all, all local to Pennsylvania. We're excited to get started. Lowbar is the bidder that we selected through the Keystone Network. So it's similar to Co-Stars, but through Keystone. $799,000 is the cost. Plus, we have, as Mr. Wigglesworth indicated, additional things that need to be purchased, like the playground equipment. But the whole project, we have $1.2 million towards this project. The project will come in about 1.1. We have about $60,000 yet to spend on contingencies or inspections as we move through the project. So it's ready to go. They hope to get here in June. It's probably going to be finished by fall.
Any comments or questions from the board?
It's just a project that we're going to get done this year, which appeals to me very much. I'd also like to thank and recognize Lakswana, the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation, the Steinman Foundation, DMA and staff for all the work that they put into this. Because it's, to get this moving along the way it has, there was a lot of moving parts and a lot of coordination needed, and I'm very appreciative of that.
Yeah, well, as Tom just said, I'm on the committee that works on this too, along with Tom and the other people on the committee. And we're all very excited about the whole thing and it should be a great project. Just want to mention though, that there will be times during the summer when that part of the park won't be open. So that's the bad news, right? Yeah, would you like to elaborate on that?
At this point, we don't have a schedule for the contractor. So as soon as we get that, we'll put it on social media when the park will be closing and for how long.
Okay.
And that's just the township portion. The Lakswama Land will still, of course, be open for their trail system.
Okay, so it'll all be worth it at some point, but yeah, it looks, it looks great to me.
I would just add to it too, this is exciting. It's, this is probably the most exciting thing about local government, right? There's a lot of mundane and boring and monotonous stuff. And it's nice when you pull in and you see the park totally full, being utilized by all the residents and a lot of activity going on. And I foresee the very same thing happening over there at Knoll Doorwork with, you know, different activities, obviously, but getting a lot of use and I think a lot of appreciation from the residents. So things like this don't just happen. It takes time, planning, and stick-to-itiveness. As Mr. Bennett outlined, there's a lot of people and a lot of groups involved in making this happen. So very thankful that it has. With that, we'll open it up to the audience for any comments or questions that they may have. Okay. Seeing none, will, any on Zoom? Okay.
I just did want to add to it, just to go down through where we got the funding for this.
Sure.
So the Blue Green Corridor is contributing $363,000. The DCNR, we got a grant award for 280. We have to match that 50%, so our contributing cost is 280,000. And then we got an EDCI grant award of 350,000, which makes up the 1.2.
Thank you.
It's about 25% of our cost, 75% grants and support.
Right.
Quick math.
So, well, very good. Well, with that, I will accept a motion to accept the Lowbar bid of $799,573.27 for the Knoll Doorwork Park project, as recommended by the township engineer. So moved. Okay, motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have the Brett Deder resignation. I guess with a heavy heart, we're going to accept Brett's resignation from the Planning Commission effective April 10th, 2025.
Yeah, Mr. Deder has purchased a property outside of the township. So unfortunately, we're losing him as a resident.
He didn't get the memo. He's now allowed to buy property outside the township, too. Brett's.
Or they should change the law and allow him because he works here.
He's been a great member of the Planning Commission. It's a tireless job. And he was engineer on the commission. So they're going to be missing his expertise greatly.
Okay.
He's also a member of, or employed by DMA. So he'll hopefully still be involved in our, our work here in the township. And he's done a great job. And I greatly appreciate the efforts that he's made for us on many, many, many projects that have come before us.
Any other comments or questions from the board on this? Any comments or questions from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Brett Deder with regrets from the Planning Commission effective April 10th, 2025?
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Russell is there, second?
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. And I guess as a follow-up to that, we're looking to reduce the number of the Planning Commission members from seven with three alternates to five plus three alternates.
Right. Several years ago, the Planning Commission, a group of seven, actually had meetings twice a month. That has since dropped back to once a month and sometimes are even canceled due to lack of agenda items. So we talked to the chairman. He seems to think that's appropriate if the board so chooses to lower it from five, from seven to five.
Okay.
I think as we talk about volunteers and we talk about the fire company at the moment, it's just important to be respectful of volunteers' time. And so a smaller board makes sense, because those are all volunteer hours. And even three alternates, probably one too many at this point. But it's great that we actually have a full Planning Commission with alternates, which most municipalities don't have.
And just to add, I know everybody up here knows it, but seven minus five is two, and a person's term expired in December. So that's, you know, there was consideration to add one. But just so everyone understands, no one is losing a position. It's just the person who term expired, and Brett Deder are the two that would be leaving.
Any other comments from the board on this? Any comments or questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion to reduce the Planning Commission members from seven to five with three alternates?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Under old business, we have a reoccurring item here. Again, just want to bring up as a discussion point, the rising cost of EMS services that the township is experiencing. Just in an attempt to keep the community aware that we are, you know, looking at this issue. It's a very large cost driver for the township. And it may, in the fall, when we are looking at our, at next year's budget, may end up resulting in some type of tax increase or something different that we've done in the past. And we just want to make the community aware of that. We don't want to spring it on them at the last moment. We've been talking about this now, I think, for several meetings, and we will continue to talk about it. We just came out with our newsletter, which this is highlighted within the newsletter, very in-depth analysis and description of that. And I would highlight that for the residents. And with that, I'll turn it over to any other board member who wants to say something or has questions.
This is something that we've been struggling with for a number of years now. Each year, basically, our costs are on an exponential curve, for those that like math. And it's just going to be more and more challenging as time goes on. We've now had to augment our fire company with part-time workers to go along with the volunteers with part-time drivers. We've still stayed away from full-time with fire. And obviously, the EMS is 100% paid drivers at this point. So there's some big cost drivers. We have PSATs in the audience, and our state association's done a great job of raising the issue at the state level with the struggles with both EMS and fire, with both volunteers and funding. And that's something that we experience here too. And that's why we have this as a recurring message on our agenda going forward to, every time we have a meeting now, we're talking about it until something happens, some action gets taken. So, but this is going to be something we're going to have to keep working on for years to come at this point. And it's something that every township in the state is struggling with it, one way or another.
My only comment would be that we need some help on this, I think, from the state level. And I'm appreciative of the work that PSATs does in supporting this issue within the municipal area. But in my mind, and I could be wrong, I've been here six or seven years now, but I haven't seen much assistance coming from Harrisburg. And I think we're at a point where we should be looking harder at that and pressing harder on that source of income and support for our emergency services organizations. Just a comment.
Okay. And a question for my fellow board members who have been through this process a few more times than me. So we've talked about it as an agenda item for a few times. I imagine we won't actually get to the nuts and the bolts of dollars until we do budgeting. Would that be the case?
Yes.
I think, I mean, I'm hopeful that we have some great numbers that come in in the fall. You never know. But if they don't, and the projections that we saw last time around hold, I think we're looking at some sort of tax increase or some sort of fee that's going to have to be discussed either this year or for next year. There's going to have to be, there's, we're going to have to make some tough decisions about where the money comes from.
We've done a good job over the last 10 years of really being very fiscally, fiscal with our monies in the township. But when you start having the increases we're going to be seeing for both fire and EMS, there's a certain amount of fiscal before you run out fiscal and you have to do something. And we're, we're going to have to pay the bills at some point. There's a good chance that we will be pretty sound at the end of this year, but long-term, the projections are not looking good without making some sort of adjustment with some sort of fee or something going forward for emergency services, minus police. We're talking fire and EMS right now.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns, want to make a comment in reference to this? Okay. Any from Zoom? Do we have any new business tonight? Hearing none, public comment? Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment tonight?
Actually, Mr. Chair, real quick, probably a new business, just to throw this out. We got, we're 15 months away from the 250th celebration. So we really need to start thinking about things that we might want to do in our community for 2026, as in July 4th, 2026. So just putting that on people's radar. PSAT's newsletter came out the other day with mentioning some of the grants are starting to be there, but it's just starting to, something to think about now at this point, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. You're right.
Just, again, I just, I bugged Cindy because I saw it in my email today. So PSAT is good with timely communication. And I immediately asked Cindy, and I just asked her one question. It was a simple one, which is, do we know how many, any houses in the township right now that go all the way back to 1776? And there are a couple. But it'd be just interesting to maybe do a little, see what we have from that era that is in the township houses and other things. And start thinking about some activities we're going to want to do around that time.
All right, thank you. Public comment, was there anyone here that wanted to make public comment tonight? Okay. Any on Zoom? Okay, no comment on Zoom, then the managers report.
So first thing on the agenda, the list is always Centerville Road. I don't know if Diane, if you have anything you need to add?
No, they're actively working on paving. There have been some utility hiccups that have come up with some development that's occurring along the corridor. But otherwise, they're actively working through getting the final coat on over the next months and finishing the work on Route 30 at this point. The construction portion is done on Centerville Road for the majority of it. There's work now on Route 30 on the shoulders and in the median. And then the final pave will go south to north on Centerville Road and then include Route 30 at the end. Still looking at being done before the end of the summer, which is exciting.
It's nice that they have all the lanes opened up now, even though it's a little rough ride right now because the final wiring course is not down. It's, it's nice. It's actually performing that. It makes the transportation engineer and me pretty happy right now. And it is performing the way it was designed to perform. Barring the big inlet hump right now on Stony Battery, but I know they're going to take care of that.
It's also important to mention, they are still working through the timing settings on the traffic signals that are now all in place and all on the system. So as, as we move further into those signals being up and functional, they are continuing to look at the timing and ensuring that the traffic flow works with the light cycles, the way they're set up. And they've made some tweaks already, and I'm sure they will continue to as we move from winter into summer and the traffic patterns change, so.
So Old Roarstown Road project, we are at the very end of that project. We're literally watching the grass grow. So as soon as that takes hold, another couple of weeks, we should be able to close that project out. There's only a hearing board meeting for the Culberk validity challenge. The Board of Supervisors continues to work on negotiations with the developers. So that's still an ongoing process. The project going on at Amos Hur Park, Phase Two, we're down to the completion of the parking lot on the west end and paving on that. It's about two weeks' worth of work. They should be there this week, but the weather has kind of stalled them a bit. So we'll probably dive into it next week. Project we just started is Route 72 and Lititz Road. Those are temporary signals. The contractor, BR Kreider, is out there doing their work. The roadway for Lititz Road will have two days of closure this week to do a storm steward line, and that will be reopened. And then the installation of the signals should happen over the summer months, and they should be in flash mode by September. So that's a good sign. We talked about Knoll Doorwork Church and Knollt is another park that we're working on. We're in the very initial phases of that. We are working with Hemphill Youth Association in installing ball fields. They are moving forward on one ball field, working on the parking lot, partial parking lot, and access drive. We've also contracted with GSL Solutions to seek grant funding for us under the ARCAP program, if the governor opens up that program. program, if the governor opens up that program. The Blue Green Corridor project, Diane and I attended a presentation for the benefit of DCNR and Representative Rivera from the city. They reviewed the information that they had at hand, and they are seeking funding. I think they submitted their DCNR application today to complete that funding of that project, which right now is between 15 and 16 million. It's not all coming from DCNR, but the, the last portion of it, they are seeking their funds for it. We talked about the Planning Commission, the Rec Authority, the Pro Shop project. If you could pop that up while you're doing that. I can talk about the 283 Commerce Hub and the 283 Interchange Project. That is not the township project that is being done by the developer. The closure of South Chickies is scheduled for 4/7 to 4/10 to allow that work to happen on the stormwater on that roadway.
It's actually through 4/28.
4/28. Okay. So there'll be some closure there on South Chickies. The residents will be notified by the developer, and we've already corresponded with West Hemfield Township. The interchange work, which will be two signals on that interchange on the ramps, that work should happen in conjunction with the closure of South Chickies, but you're essentially going to be looking at that for probably throughout the summer. Okay. In terms of stormwater projects, Harrisburg Pike Drainage, we did submit another grant application for that with the PA Small Water and Sewer Grant Program, so hopefully we'll hear something about that. So the Pro Shop at the golf course, the Rec Authority is working with Cornerstone Architects to come up with a design. You've seen this feature before. It's, the barn is now sitting where the new building will be. So the barn will be torn down. There'll be an access point going underneath the banquet facility to access golf carts so that breezeway in between there will serve as a cart stacking area. The, do you want to put up the renderings? We don't have a price for the project yet. We are working with Cornerstone, and they are getting a contractor's estimate. So we're not sure if the Rec Authority can afford the project, that we should be hearing about that probably sometime in April for their meeting in May to determine if we can actually afford moving forward with the project. But that's facing the parking lot, and that's, of course, between the banquet facility and the new Pro Shop. The Ballard's there at the end is going to be a location for a bag drop-off, which we don't, we have one now, but it's not as functional as this one will be. And then this, of course, is facing the golf course. It's just another, another shot of that. So they're moving forward as, as, as much as they can until they get a price, and then we'll have to have some discussions as to how they're going to fund it. That concludes the report, unless you have questions.
I have none. Anyone? Any questions or comments from the audience on the manager's report? All right, gentlemen, well, that will be it for tonight's meeting. We will adjourn at 7:37 PM. Again, congratulations to Mr. Thomas Russell. Thank you.